Good morning again, everyone, and thanks again for being here. We will call the work session of August the 8th to order at this time. And we welcome our elected official Sheriff Gary Gullit. And help me out if there's any missing. Seeing none to know others, I've asked the Lieutenant Daniel to bring all the citizens wishing to speak list. And I like doing that, just to turn your devices off, phones off. And we're honored today to have Tommy Leonard come forward and provide our indication today. He's our Director of Recycling in the Landfill and Transfer Station and also is a qualified chaplain. Tommy?
Good morning. Good morning. Let's pray together. Father, as we offer this prayer to you, if there's any sin in our hearts or minds that is holding us back from approaching you in prayer, we ask for forgiveness at this time. Grant us, oh Lord, that with peace of mind that we may face all that this day brings. Help us to dedicate ourselves completely to your holy will. For every hour of this day instruct and support us in all things. Whatever we receive during this day, teach us to accept it in the firm conviction that all circumstances fulfill your holy will. And when things unforeseen occur, let us not forget that everything comes from you. Teach us to behave sincerely and rationally toward each other and our families and our communities so that we don't bring confusion or sorrow to anyone. Stow upon us, oh Lord, strength to endure the fatigue of this day and bear our part in all passing events. And we thank you, Father, for your word, that it reveals your will, and your Spirit gives us the desire and ability to understand and obey it. And we praise you for the wisdom and insight that you give us through your word. Scripture calls us to pray for our leaders. And Father, we lift you up, we lift up to you, our president, our national leaders, state, local officials, and ask you to give them godly wisdom as they make decisions that affect each of us daily. I pray for the leadership of Cobb County, or for Pauling County. Ask you that you give them wisdom, and above all, that they do, it would bring honor and glory to you. Father, we pray for the men and women of our military and our first responders who serve our country with pride and courage, and we pray for their protection and safe return to their families each day. I pray for the fathers and mothers of our community with young children and ask that you guide them and give them wisdom and knowledge to raise their children in a loving and godly way. And Lord, I pray for the parents with children that no longer live in their household, that they would set a good example for their children and offer them wise counsel when needed. Father God Almighty, we lift up to you those that are sick and hurting and ask you to comfort them and heal them if it be your will. And we pray for those who are lost to this world, those that have heard your word but still refuse to give up their earthly desires and accept Christ. 2 Kings, Chapter 19, verses 23 through 9 reminds us to never take credit for what you, God, have done. We praise you, knowing that there's no power on this earth will ever prevail against you and your servants. We praise you for being our protector and our source of spiritual victory. May all the praise and glory go to you for the great things you have given us. It is in Christ's beautiful, holy name we pray. Amen. And amen.
Let us pray. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That comment almost takes a motion to adjourn. The minutes of the July 25th, 2017, public hearing, and the July 25th work session minutes, and the voting meeting, regular board meeting, are all available for your review. I would like to call Mr. Kletch, who has announced about a town hall meeting.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I'm going to have a town hall meeting, August 15th, at 7:00 PM, in Hiram at the events center, and everybody's welcome. I also want to take this a second. A few weeks ago, I got pretty far on Chairman Carmichael, and we've been talking about it. And probably before I did that open session, I probably should have talked to him in person. I did not do that. So I just want to take time to publicly apologize to him for not doing that. Apologize to his family and anybody that I may have hurt in the process. Ms. Carmichael, apologize.
Appreciate that more than you know. We have no invited guests, no bed awards, reports from committees and departments. We have none. Public participational agenda items, no one has signed up under the consent agenda items. We have two. Number one is action to the surplus, the fire combat Halagon skid unit, be sold associated equipment upon approval with the ARFF crash truck. And number two, authorize the closing of the purchase of the property located at 3844 Atlanta Highway, Dallas, Georgia, for the Pauling County Water System, and authorize the chairman to execute any documents necessary to complete the closing of this purchase. And there actually are three consented agenda items. The third one is to appoint Robert Kraus officially to the Pauling County Industrial Building Authority for a term ending December 31st, 2018. Any of the commissioners like to move any of these three items to regular business. Hearing done, we will move on to new business, sorry, to old business. Number one, discuss action to appoint Dan Nolan to the Pauling County Industrial Building Authority with a term ending December 31st, 2019. It was tabled in July 25th at the Board of Commissioners meeting.
If we need to tighten this again, why don't you do it this minute?
They have some glasses up in the bar. To the office and lift everything in there. I will read a little bit about Mr. Nolan's biography. He graduated from University of Tennessee at Chattanooga with a Bachelor of Science in Business Administration and Human Resource Management. Mr. Nolan manages four large-scale events companies and has worked in the tent and event-related industries for 29 years. The company called Tents Unlimited. His specialties are extremely difficult events, like weddings, large-scale sporting events, event budgets, government contracts, site and space design, and event infrastructure logistics. Dan is a partner in the Governor's Gun Club, counted as the nation's premier gun club, featuring state-of-the-art gun range and exceptional restaurant to its valuable members. As the CEO and COO of Tents Unlimited, he's been a managing partner for 19 years and the president. One of the quotes that I liked from LinkedIn was, "Together we have mastered," he's talking about having a spectacular staff like we have here, "Together we have mastered the art of organized chaos." So that's why I nominated him, I thought he could fit in perfectly. So anybody else I know, there's been some phone calls made to Mr. Nolan, buyer, Board Commissioners, any other comments? Hearing done, we'll move on to new business. New business item number one, discuss action to adopt Resolution 1722, setting the military rate for the county MNO, Ms. Pollard.
Okay, we already got four?
Number two, discuss action to adopt the Resolution 1723, setting the military rate for the fire district. And number three, discuss action to adopt Resolution 17-24, setting the military rate for bonds. And number four, discuss action to adopt Resolution 1725, setting the military rate for the Pauling County School District.
Okay. On number one, for the county MNO, is the resolution currently has 6.5. The resolution 1723 for the fire district is 3.1, and the resolution for the bond is 2.07. And the school board has presented us with a letter as requested, 18.879. And those will set military rate for the county, and we will then submit those resolutions to the Department of Revenue, and the Tax Commissioner can begin the process of preparing the tax bills. This is important.
Any questions or discussion on these first four items taking to the platoon raid?
I might have a couple of comments. If it's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
One of the ladies that came up, and I can't remember her name, she may have already left.
Marlon?
She had talked about, wished this was done a little bit at the time, and she talked about a 13-point something increase. I think she got that from just the MNO side.
That's correct. The tax adds.
Right. And I understand that. Because the MNO side owes 21% of the taxes, the 13-point something percent increase is 13-point increase on the 21% of the taxes. An increase is an increase, and we all know that. Whether it's a dollar, whether it's $100, it's an increase. I probably should have answered or said something at that time. You look back through the years and you look at, I think it was 2008, that was our high time of taxes that we collected. In the last 10 years or so, we have not dipped below 6.5 until last year. So my preaching today is nothing more than what I have done really the last four years. In fact, when Tommy Graham was sitting where Mr. Kletch is, Tommy Graham and I both said we can't continue to keep doing the rollback and not have the money there to put in place for our services. Last year, and some of these are going by memory, so don't nail me if I don't get it correct, but last year, when we were looking at 6.528, I was advocating for us just to tuck it right there at 6.5 and be done. And what that would have done, would have, we had that there, we would have been in better shape last year, which would have put us in better shape this year, and it would have been what was done, was gradually. So I agree with her. But I do want the public to realize that's 13% of the 21%. I'm in my seventh year. I've sat up here at every meeting, every Board of Commissioners meeting, for six years and seven months, I've never missed a meeting. Every single one. I've learned a lot. I've seen the workings of it, I've seen what department heads go through, I've seen what employees go through, I see what people like Scott Green that wants to get out there and provide the best and do the best. I see what he goes to, to work with, what he has. There's been times I've looked at Scott and I say, "Can we just not pave the road, Scott? Do we have to do all the other stuff?" But the engineering, Scott, is to do it right, not only for today, but so that it's right for the future. So I respect that. I've learned to respect that from department heads that are not just looking at today, they're looking at tomorrow. They're not just looking at what we have to deal with from yesterday, they're looking down the road to the future. And so department heads have taught me a lot, and employees have taught me a lot. So when we talk about gradually, I wish last year we went from 6.528 just to 6.5 and been done. And then we wouldn't be having all the discussions that we're having this year, although we would still be having the discussions, because if we don't do a rollback, back to somewhere around 5.7, then it's considered a tax increase. When you look at the number, we're still collecting 2.7, 2.8, million less than what we did almost 10 years ago. We can blame whatever we want on anybody we want, but we've got a $900,000 increase in our benefit package. Thanks to Brian Ackert, that's all we have. And last year, we did go out and put that out for a bit, we did go through a process. Thanks to Brian, working on it, we don't have a 1.5 million, we've got a $900,000. We've put $800,000 in stormwater. Personally, I think it should have been 1.2, 1.5. The budget's always working, and that'll be something that I'll work on, no matter what we do today, to get the budget passed, to give more in stormwater, one way or another. You gotta do it. You gotta face the facts of what's coming. We did a salary study, has not been done since 1999. For six and a half years, I've sat up here and I've wanted to do a salary study. We voted to do it. Now we gotta do something about it. When you put in stormwater, which is still lacking at $800,000, and you put in benefit package, and you put in salary study, and you look at the salary study, the effects for next year, not just this year, because whatever passes today, if we put in a salary study, if we pass the budget, there's a certain amount that we're going to spend this year, but it only goes in effect October 1st, let's say. Next year, it'll be in effect all year, so there's a little bit more to it. But you're at $4.5 million. We have asked employees to do more with less long enough. Now, comment was also made in the public hearing. And I have tried my best not even bring up the airport this whole year. Tried my best, and anything that's happened this year has not been brought up by myself. But I will defend myself and my stance. I will defend it. On October 3rd, 2013, it was on the 11 o'clock news. On October 8th, 2013, we got a meeting. It was a heated meeting in here. And I was told by somebody else that's not here, that if you're going to do things like this, where I stood up for what I believed in, for the people of this county, what I believed in, were promises and commitments made. If you're going to stand up and you're going to act like this, that's what I was told, you'll never get reelected. My comment that day was, I'm not working on getting reelected at all. I'm working on what my commitment was when I got elected the first time. And my personal view is that if, whether you're a politician, or you're just sitting in a seat and you don't claim to be one, if you work on what you committed to the first time, you don't have to worry about anything else. So I wasn't working on getting reelected then, I stood up for what I believed in, and I won't be working on getting reelected today when I vote the way I need to vote, on a mill rate and on a budget. I want to make that clear to people. Nobody should be surprised, because if you've sat in here and paid attention for the last four years, I've advocated for, we don't need to drop below 6.5. Go back and look at the videos. We can't continue to do this on the backs of our employees. We need to do the salary study. We've got benefits to pay. This budget that we're passing this year, and this is something I've said every year, is not everything that we need. A lot of needs, but there's a lot of things that aren't there. It doesn't fix all, it's not the fix-all. If I want to work on reelection and I don't want to vote for the 6.5, or I want to look at Todd Pownell's household, I wouldn't want to vote for the 6.5. But I wasn't elected to do that. I was elected to look out for the county. And so I'm working on my election that happened last time, not next time. And although people may be happy with me for my stance on the airport, and there's some people that aren't, I've done exactly what I said I'd do. I gave my first two years' salary back to the county. I've worked hard, I've been honest, and I did one thing I didn't commit to do, I've been at every meeting. And I've paid attention to the citizens, and I've paid attention to these department heads and these employees. And Mr. Carmichael, we had our work day that we had with Ms. Pollard, that was open to the public. And we worked on this budget together, and I heard the department heads loud and clear. But I didn't just listen to the department heads, because I've been here for six and a half years, I've seen what they went through, and I've seen where they've made cuts, and I've seen where the employees have made cuts. And sometimes they've gotten through things and through different processes, and you didn't realize that we were hurting. But there will come a day, if we're not careful, where you're going to see it in some areas. And I want to make sure that that doesn't happen. So I hope that answers the lady that spoke about doing it a little bit at the time, that's what I've tried to do. And then I hope it answers any other questions. But if you've listened to me at every budget meeting that we've had the last four years especially, I'm still standing not where I stood four years ago.
Yes, and I'd like to say something too. I agree with about 99% of what Commissioner Pownell said. I agree with what Sheriff Gullit said. I know what Scott's saying, Scott Green, Department Head, when he's talking about paving and how we're behind, not getting that done. I understand all that, I understand, we gotta do what's best for the county. I understand why we're here, but there's also another side to the story. The other side of the story is our citizens. And there are citizens out there who are hurting. There's citizens out there who are on fixed incomes, real incomes have not kept up in places. A lot of government mandates over the last eight years have hurt people, especially when it comes to healthcare. Healthcare has hurt this county. Healthcare has hurt people in this office, we heard today too, said, "I'm going to have health insurance." I too wish we would have gone 6.5 last year. But we do have people that are hurting, I've heard from a lot of them, I want them to know that I have heard from them. And yes, I gotta do what's best for this county, but I'm also elected to listen to the people and do the will of the people. And I think it's important that we remember that.
Dave, you read all four of these new business items, that's correct?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a comment on new business item number four, regarding military for the school district. Just a point of clarification for those here and those who may be watching later, the Board of Commissioners is the only body in the county that has the power to levy taxes. The school board votes on this military rate, it gets passed over to this board. Our job then is to pass what they have passed. What they have passed is an increase in taxes. Mr. Tabitha pointed out earlier, I think it's about 62% was the number of the overall tax bill that is this item number four, the military. We can't vote against that, we'd end up in court and we would lose, quite honestly. So I do want to, I think it's important that this is coming from the school board. That vote was taken last month, I believe it was. There was one vote against this increase, that school board member was Jeff Fuller. The other school board members who have passed this over to us for passing today are Ken Curl, Sammy McClure, Glenn Albright, Nick Chester, Kim Cobb, and Teresa Lyons. And I don't say that to throw anybody under a bus or anything like that, but I do want it to be pointed out that this increase that has to be voted on this board is out of the control of this board.
We've seen a lot of numbers over the last two weeks, it's more than a lot of pie charts, been given a lot of information. And part of what Commissioner Pownell said, and also Commissioner Kletch, both of them touched on it, and it had been in some of the information gathering. If you notice, between 2008 and this year, we're only going to collect, we are going to collect $2.1 million less in tax revenue than we did more than 10 years ago. And yet, Sheriff Gullit spoke of the number of deputies and the number of support people that they need, also Chief Pelfry, and there are other departments also, that because of the increase in population of over 10,000 in those 10 years, the services are needed, need to grow, and it takes money for those services to grow. So my comment.
Item number five, discuss action to adopt Resolution 17-26, authorizing the tax commissioners to remain, I'm sorry, to retain a 2.5% fee for collecting the school tax. Ms. Pollard?
This is retained, it's an amendment fee that the tax commissioner will retain, force meeting funds to the school board, and it assists in the preparation of bills, the preparation of the digest volumes, and the process of arriving as a bill, and the collections of those.
Any questions on that? New business item number six, discuss action to adopt the fiscal year 2018 budget.
Morning. I have put copies out in everybody's chair this morning of the budget. We did release a revise, a revision on August 3rd, and I'd like to tell you what the difference is between what was published on June 1st and this revision. And if you look at the last page, under non-departmental, that number has reduced, it is a reduction in the, for the airport contribution from 350 to 325, so that's the correct amount afforded to the agreement. And it also eliminates economic development. So it eliminates the 130% economic development. And if you look on page one, your current year fund balance has increased about $1 million, and those are for improvements that need to be made at the landfill. Over the past couple of years, I mean, not past couple of years, I'm sorry, the past, since January, we've discussed the landfill, we've discussed the fees, we've discussed the improvements that need to be made out there. We've increased the fees for out of county, and that's not correcting the traffic problem. So we got to make some improvements for the flow of traffic out there. This is a start, the total amount of improvements that they have planned to make are about $3 million. So this is a third of those. And those were the only changes that have been, and it increases from one new person to two new people for landfill.
Any other comments on 2018 budget or questions for Ms. Pollard?
I don't have questions for Tabitha, but I do have a couple things I'd like to say. First, I'd like to commend our department heads on the way they handle their budgets. It became obvious to me, the very first meeting I sat in, after It became obvious to me, the very first meeting I sat in after taking this seat, it was a department head meeting in the conference room across the hall. It became very obvious to me that it is in the forefront of our department head's mind that every dollar in their budget is a taxpayer dollar. And they did very well keeping that in mind, knowing that money doesn't necessarily grow on trees. People say, well, we need to do what we can to cut expenses, and where can we cut expenses? And I, there are a couple that came to my mind earlier today. This is not an all-inclusive list, but there are two department heads that I'd just like to call out and for the job that they've done in finding a way to save money. One, Todd mentioned Brian Acker. I didn't remember the number. I thought it was about $1 million and a half dollars. It was a big number that we were going to see an increase in benefits cost. And that's the county's cost for the benefits that we offer our employees. And Brian worked really hard with brokers and they were able to pull out, pull out some places where we were going to face an increase, and they were able to get that to a more manageable number. $100,000 is still a whole lot of money, but it's a lot less than $1.5 million. And so, you know, Brian, I appreciate the hard work that you put in for that. Another one is Deidra. She got lots of voting machines from San Diego, California, saved us $130,000. Well, you know, you go to vote and one of the biggest frustrations is there's not enough machines. And here Deidra is adding. How many machines did you tell me it was, Deidra?
120.
120 voting machines she got for less than a third of what the cost should have been, saved the county $130,000. So these are just a couple of examples, but to all the department heads, I know, I appreciate, I know I can speak to the rest of the board on this one. You guys do work hard to understand whose money it is you're spending when it's in your budget, and that's appreciated more than you know. Something I should have said in the last meeting, and I'm sorry I didn't. Sheriff Gullis got up and he stuck his neck out and he says, "I'm asking for more money and I'm willing to stick my neck out because I know it's me asking for the money." And I'll tell you, the relationship, you know, Dave mentioned ACCG classes that we go to. I've learned that the relationship between sheriff and Board of Commissioners is one that can be a little bit tricky. And I'm not going to go into detail because I don't want to give Gary any ideas. But I have, quite honestly, I've heard some horror stories from people in, from commissioners whose sheriffs have hung them out to dry, who have put them in extremely difficult positions when it comes to tax, when it comes to taxpayers, when it comes to personnel. And there's a lot of stuff that Gary could do legally and really tied his board's hands. Instead of doing that, he comes openly and says, "This is what I need. I'm asking for you to give it to me." And he sticks his neck out there. Gary, I appreciate the way you deal with this board more than you could ever possibly know. Those horror stories that I hear at conferences, I tell them about my sheriff and they just, they don't even believe it. It's unbelievable. So I do appreciate, I do appreciate the way you handle that. The salary study results are put into play in this budget. I'm glad to see them in there. I fully support having them in there. You know, we said last year we found money for, in the budget, for a raise for our employees. And we said the salary study's coming back and we're serious about it and we're going to take the results seriously and hang on. And we have asked a lot of our employees to do a lot of things and do more with less and to get by and to get by and to get by. And that's in public safety. That's in every department here. It's across the county. And we've said we're going to correct those situations and we've said we were serious about it. And now's the time to take care of that. And so I am serious about that and I'm happy to see that in there. One thing that I would ask, Dave, if you could maybe chime in on this. I've had a lot of people ask me about stormwater. What exactly we're talking about, why it's coming back, what the $100,000 is for. I've answered those questions as best I can. I've been in some of the meetings, somebody could have been in more of the meetings than me. Can you give a little insight and maybe, maybe we can call someone else? Could you go into the stormwater a little bit?
I will, and Scott Green has studied along with, we've got a committee on stormwater of Bruce Cole and Laurie. Stormwater is that invisible nightmare that can happen if we don't deal with it because you don't see it. I'm very thankful to be a cancer survivor and the cancer I had in my chest in 2002, lymphoma, nobody could see it. I was just as ugly with or without it, so, you know. But a lot of you probably in the room that are cancer survivors, you know, you don't see it, you just start feeling it. And this county is really going to start feeling the stormwater problems. And Scott passed out, a little asphalt, if you wait too long to redo asphalt, it goes from $1 and then when you get past that point of kind of no return, and then you try to redo the road or the asphalt, it's anywhere from $6 to $14. So it's pay me a little now or pay me a whole lot more later. And that's the situation with the stormwater problems that takes that heavy stormwater in a heavy thunderstorm where it may rain five inches in an hour and takes it where it needs to go instead of washing out a yard or making a big hole. Somebody probably saw on the news this week about the four or five homes that sunk into a hole in Florida and it's a total loss. Saw pictures of it yesterday and couldn't believe it. Similar to stormwater, the pipes are going to deteriorate and break and then a whole road's going to go out and you won't even be able to get to your house. Not only that, but the state levies fines when we don't measure up to the stormwater standards. And, you know, I don't think we want to use our tax money to pay fines. Scott, you want to add anything?
I'd be glad to. DOT is handling the maintenance work orders for stormwater on a triage basis now. Customer complaints come in, we're looking at backlogs of two, three months on many requests. And if that involves a detention pond or water quality pond, it is back burner completely, unless it's just really a grievous situation. We'll take care of it. We just don't have the ability to start tackling those detention ponds without the staff. But, you know, basically this proposal is putting stormwater back to the level it was. It doesn't really catch up the backlog that has been created by not doing it since 2011 or so. It begins to put it back. That's why Mr. Palnell mentioned it really need to be a higher number, 1.2, 1.7. And I think it's a measured step to put it back at about $800,000 right now because we are doing an analysis of what we really need for services and trying to develop a level of service approach. And those results will come in here in the next month or so, and then we'll be able to make additional recommendations on what we need to do next year further on. So I hope that answers your question, but it's one since we can't continue to nor, it's underground, it's out of sight until the hole falls in, and then it's way more expensive to deal with it at that point, if the road is compromised and so forth.
Thank you very much. All right, new business item number seven, discuss action to approve, to proceed with the sale of the ARFF crash apparatus and associated equipment to the Cobb County Fire and Emergency Services in the amount of $310,000, Chief Pelfry.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
As you recall, we surplus the 2010 crash truck back in this past April. I know normally that we go to options and get about a third of what we get, so we didn't want to send this truck to an auction. So I contacted Oshkosh who sold us the truck. They gave me a dealer and I was talking to him and getting some quotes from him and then Cobb County approached me. They had heard that the truck was for sale to the Great Island and we've worked out this, they gave me an offer there for the truck. They actually already paid for Oshkosh to come down and inspect the truck. They had 100% inspection and passed. Just asking that we go ahead and sell this. This truck we paid $490,000 for about four years ago, it's seven years old. Most trucks depreciate anywhere from 10% to 12% per year. This is a specialty piece of equipment that hasn't been used much. We have replaced it in service, so it's depreciating every year. And I'd like to sell this truck and use the funds for more equipment. Get its purchase goods points.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief Pelfry. New business number eight, discuss action to accept the felony drug court program to enter to a memorandum of understanding with the Center Beyond Solutions LLC for the purpose of providing treatment services and authorize the chairman to execute all necessary documents. Mr. Brian Baker?
Good morning, Chairman and Board. I appreciate the opportunity to promote on behalf of the court. I'll be real brief. This is just some housekeeping. The money for this was a grant that we received a couple of months ago for FY18. And it's just the memorandum of understanding with the treatment provider that they've currently been using. Because the amount of money increased above the threshold of $50,000, it requires to come over and actually ask for your assistance and approval and therefore allow the chairman to sign off on that memorandum. The amount is around $74,000, a little north of that, 74 and some change, but it is in the grant money that we've already received. So we're not asking for any additional money or anything like that.
And we appreciate you keeping us up to date. You didn't have to come over and keep us in the loop on that, but it certainly helps. And thank you.
We appreciate your support. No other questions or comments on that?
Thank you, Mr. Baker. New business item number nine, discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter to a lease agreement with Kennesaw State University for the space located on the third floor of the old courthouse building. It's another thing, I don't know if Ms. Pollard found time to do it, but she's been ramrodding that effort also.
A few weeks ago, the Kennesaw State, well, first we had Cobb Ed was using this space for the GED program, and they have moved their program, so it left the third floor vacant. Kennesaw found out that it was going to be vacant. They had applied for four grants, two of them I'm aware they've been approved for, I'm not sure about the other two. And they've asked to utilize this space for their administration of those programs with the grants. The programs are going to target high school students, and I really probably shouldn't give you a whole lot of details because I'll get it wrong, but they're going to target high school students that are underprivileged and so they don't get, they may or may not understand how they could achieve a higher education or what the next steps after high school should include for them. And so it'll give them the opportunity to get out into society, to hopefully get out of that underprivileged situation and maybe into a sustainable home environment as they create their own home, so that they will be an asset, more of an asset than what they would have been if they didn't receive these opportunities. So that's, they have agreed, they would like to enter into a one-year lease with five renewals, and they've agreed to the $1,600 per month plus an additional utilities cost of $19,800 per month instead of the rent, $3,580 per month for the space.
I think they're going to be there to give guidance and direction and encouragement to get them to the next level that they want to go to. I think it's a good, sounds like a good program according to what we heard.
Sounds like an excellent program.
Yeah, very good for the community.
And if I can, I'm going to back and do something that I probably should have done when we made those comments. It brought to my attention, normally we kind of talked about where our budget is and how the departments have all contributed in keeping our costs as low as they can. And there's, I'm not going to call names as such, but the attitude of the departments as well as the employees is that one, each budget, they compare it to the previous budget and they want to look at their budget and say there's maybe spending more, but they're providing a better service, or they pride themselves in coming in under budget if there is no change, no apparent change to service. So we have a few that have really come in and I know Sheriff Gullis monitors his budget as to make sure that he is under budget more than over budget. And some of our other larger departments like DOT, they want to come in under or they want to be providing more asphalt and rope. So that's kind of the approach all departments take, and I very much appreciate their willingness to do that.
Mr. Chairman, if you should go back to the consent agenda, item number two. Yes, sir. I'd like to pull that out. Okay, item number two, this consent agenda will be pulled to new business. And since we finished the new business number nine, I'll be, new business number 10, and it will be authorized for closing, for the purchase of property located on 3844 Atlanta Highway, Dallas, Georgia, for the Volley County Water System and authorize the chairman to execute any documents necessary to complete the closing of this purchase.
This line, sorry. This is for the SunTrust Bank Building. It's for the water systems used. This just completes where you had authorized to offer SunTrust $1.7 million, which they did take for the building. And so we have gotten, we actually thought that it was around two acres. It's really 2.4 after doing a survey. So it's a little bit larger of a site than we originally thought. That back parking lot area is larger than we originally anticipated, but we do have a survey done that shows that now. And so that's where we are. This is the water systems projects. I believe it was included in the last bond that was passed.
In other words, it's not part of this budget that we're discussing today for argument of?
Correct. It comes out of the water system, which is a user-paid system.
Yes.
For revenue fund as opposed to a general fund.
Any other discussion on that new business item number 10? It's been discussed at length in closed session, facts and figures and the bond, your decision.
You had an offer in session?
Yeah.
Was that in?
That's what I thought I said. We discussed it closely. Any other comments? Any thoughts? Although everyone's going to be disappointed to have no executive session. So we do have no executive session. It's a conclusion of our regular business. We have no public participation in non-agenda items. So entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you everyone for being here.
Motion to adjourn?
Second, all of us in favor. We are adjourned.